Good idea, no smart.
Same old.
Yeah, oh, that's good.
You hear all that driver was doing last night?
Okay. Well, be religious, but not perfect. Good.
Oh yeah?
Awesome, okay.
In the hole where they're dumping?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Here we are again.
Yeah, thanks for attending.
Oh sure, yeah.
Huh.
One of the Northland guys had a heart attack last night and ended up in the brush with the side dump.
Of course is.
Up in the quarterage, one of the Northland trucks. Yes, and I responded. He woke up, he was up. I did respond, but that doesn't mean I pushed sin.
Well, now that I have you here.
Yeah, if you can go, that'd be great.
Oh, okay, sure.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
Okay.
Do you want to shove the cards up Jan?
Oh yeah, yeah.
I don't want to shove them.
But I thought I pushed sin, but it's been happening.
Better get organized first.
You wouldn't be the only one.
I'd go on the paper, Heidi said shove things at Jan.
Oh yeah.
I have it in my purse.
Good idea.
So this is one of those weeks.
That's how they describe them?
And this week, and that week.
The Blue Power Ranger?
Okay.
So I'm going to Virginia on the 21st.
It's pretty good that you know what.
Anyway, I forgot my computer.
Anytime, Jan.
I always bring my computer. Been here for so long, I forgot.
Where is my thingy here? Okay, are we all ready? Good morning, and we'll call the Cook County Board of Commissioners to order on this day of September 11th. I'll rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any adjustments to the agenda?
Madam Chair, I have two. One is, there was a correction to be made in the August 14th minutes on an issue related to the conversation about the capital fund balance for the Highway Department. It was reported as 188,500, and it should be 118,500. We'll make that correction. And then, a suggestion from Valerie that we pause the meeting at 8:46 for a moment of remembrance of 9/11.
Yeah. Okay, did you want to discuss further the Highway or put that as F or are you over?
That was just an amendment, an amendment to the minutes, so that the minutes should be corrected to reflect the correct number.
And the minutes are in the, it's the consent agenda, so you'll be approving that correction. It's already been made in the physical minutes and online and, yeah.
Okay, if there's nothing else, then a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, we will have time for public comment. Is anyone here for a public comment? We'll watch our time here so we can observe the 9/11. Downtown at the Bear Park, they do have, the volunteer Grand Mary Firemen have always brought in their fire truck with the flag that have staff there, so we will join them at 8:46 in commemoration of observing the fate of what happened on 9/11. So we'll move on to the consent adjustment. Anything there to be pulled?
I move to accept the consent agenda. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so Molly, tentatively, are you ready to do a little bit before I call for a moment?
I'm happy to, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I'm just trying to bring it up here. What's first?
Maple Hill Land Exchange.
So, the Maple Hill issue, this is a ground lease authorizing the Maple Hill Volunteer Fire Department to have their fire hall on a parcel of land that is currently federally owned, but on the date of the, on the date of the land exchange will become county property. So I'm asking for the board's authorization ahead of time on the basis of this lease, and then the final version of the lease will have an effective date of the, matching the date of closing of the land exchange, and I have some exciting news about that. I was just contacted by the Forest Service Realty Specialist, Christy Tampio, last week, or maybe early this week, and we are setting that closing for the last full week of September, the week of the 24th. Imagine that. So, after 10, 15 years, or maybe more, it looks like we're finally coming to a close.
I'll believe it on the 25th.
Jeff says 18 or 19.
How many steps?
Maybe you still don't want to get your hopes up, that would make sense.
How many steps are left after the closing?
I think that's the final step.
Okay.
The check, Brady, the check. The check and cashing it.
So, I'm gonna, we do have a board meeting on the 25th, there'll be four final agreements. You'll have your approval on that day, and then we'll put the three that you've already approved into the consent agenda with the accurate effective date matching the closing date. And on that day, I should be able to, well, we'll probably be able to share with you beforehand what the actual date of the closing is, and whether there are any special activities or events, if it's like gonna be an event.
Yeah, will the Forest Service be here with cake?
I think they should come and give us cake, but.
From the person who can't eat it.
You just want to see it.
I just want to see it.
So, I'm not sure. I know that originally, a few years ago, they wanted to make it a big event, but I don't know who's in charge now and whether that would. So anyway, your, the action I'm asking for is to authorize the execution of this ground lease to, wasn't it Maple Hill?
I know, you've got Gunflint.
We did Maple, we did Maple Hill already, so if we can just backtrack, this is all regarding the Gunflint Trail Volunteer Fire Department. We had already done the Maple Hill, but it's the same.
And it's only the Mid Trail Hall?
Mid Trail.
For the Mid Trail. But it's the same deal, it's a ground lease to the Gunflint Trail Volunteer Fire Department for their fire hall at Mid Trail, effective the date of the land exchange closing.
The request before the board was updated and corrected, but apparently the agenda line item was not.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, we'll open up for questions or comments, and starting with Commissioner Shub.
No questions. That's what I thought, we already did Maple Hill at the last meeting.
You're right.
And this one is Gunflint.
Yeah.
No questions.
Good news, good work, thank you.
Severson?
Great, no questions.
Okay, then we'll hear a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any further discussion, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passed.
Great, awesome.
Awesome. Thank you, for all that work, to be involved.
More to come.
Yes.
Madam Chair, if we can move on to the next agenda item. So, I'm also asking the board to authorize the county opting in to a federal lawsuit, Kane County versus United States. Now Kane County is an Idaho county which has sued the federal government for underpayment of hilt payments in lieu of tax. So Kane County is one of the counties like ours that has a large percentage of federally owned, publicly owned land, and receives funding in lieu of property taxes. And suffered the same harm that the Cook County suffered for a couple of years in which the federal government did not pay us hilt payments according to the formula that's in legislation, instead, underpaying us, and Brady knows a little in more detail probably how that works. But essentially, Kane County sued the federal government, was awarded a summary judgment by the court, which already has determined that the federal government is liable to pay up to the full amount of hilt payments for those years that we missed out on. And because it's a class action lawsuit, the law firm that represents Kane County has reached out to similarly situated counties across the country, asking if we would like to be part of the class that benefits from this lawsuit. Essentially, there is no, very small to no risk to Cook County in opting into this lawsuit. It's not going to be an extended time period because the court has already determined liability, and the only unanswered question is exactly how much the payments will be. The attorney that I spoke to from the law firm was pretty optimistically judging that we might even have the payments by the end of this year, but that seems pretty optimistic to me. At any rate, within probably six months, we could get paid back between, their estimation was between $9,000 and $10,000. But like I said, it's not yet determined by the court how much it would be. I did attach to the board request some frequently asked questions and answers, and I'm happy to address any concerns you might have. There is a deadline of September 14th, so we'd want to get this approved today if possible.
And so Brady, is there anything you'd like to?
Well, just to note, this is the one under 6902, which is our, the hilt, there's three different statutes, but this is the one where we're severely limited by our population, so we get somewhere between 215,000 and 230,000 a year over the last many years. So, so what they withheld is a small percentage, that's why it doesn't come out to a lot of money. But we're wondering if, you know, if this is a precedent, because they applied the same, they called it sequester, at the time where they cut those funds to the BWCA money. Now that's a large sum, we're losing 150,000 a year on that payment. That would be very significant, but we wouldn't have all the counties in the country backing us up on this. So, I don't know if St. Louis and Lake County are willing to, are thinking about the same thing. But if there's court precedent, maybe there's a shot in getting that back too.
Okay, questions, comments, Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, with that being said, it would be really good for us to do this, and, because there's even further benefit possible, potential.
That's a good, good move.
Questions?
No questions.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, Molly.
Move forward, and how will that be done, Molly, through your office?
Yes, we'll send in this notice, I think I might need, no, I don't need a signature from the board on the notice. We'll make sure that it's, yeah, that it gets into the law firm as soon as possible.
Okay, good, thank you on that. It's really important to be at the table for many, many issues, and that was one of them that came before Congress and before a lot of things, and so I'm glad that Idaho decided to take up the cause and pursue it. So, public hearing, so we're gonna pause at 8:46, but, so Brady, do you want to start a little bit of it?
You can't start till nine.
But that's at nine, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The thing, how about the investment report?
Okay, that's short.
That's 6B. And this, this is pursuant to our investment policy that we report this once a year. So this is, this is our investment report as of the end of 2017, and according to our policy, we break it out in three different ways. And as I state on the front page, the primary concern of investing is safety. So our objective is preservation of capital, no speculation, and that's easy to manage because the state doesn't allow us to do hardly anything. So, there's nothing risky that you're actually allowed to do. I mean, there's some risk in everything, of course, but CDs are generally not risky if the whole economy is not at risk. Liquidity is the second objective, so that we can pay our bills, and the third then is yield. So, on the next page, you see how we break it out. We try to keep under 50, no more than 50% with any particular agent, these are agents, that, so these are not the direct investments. So Wells Fargo gets about 43%, the Magic Fund, which is a joint powers of all the counties, 25%. Security State Bank, we have a small amount, 25,000. 26% with RBC, 0.9% with North Shore Credit Union, and 4.43% for Grand Mary State Bank, that's our current depository where all our checking goes on. A little pie chart of that same information, and then broken out by maturity. Under six months, we keep about 33% for payments, like large highway payments, et cetera. Half a year to a year, 7%, one to two years, 7%, two to three years, 8%, three to four years, 4%, four to five years, 10%, and then long-term, plus five years, about 32%. Next category by investment types. So certificates of deposit, which are relatively safe, about 28% of our money. Money market funds, about 28%, that's the most liquid. Bank, checking, savings accounts, 4%. And government agencies, that's where our long-term investments are, about 39%. The last.
Brady, we'll pause for a minute.
Sure.
Thank you. So we'll take a minute of silence and observation. Okay, thank you. All right, Brady, proceed.
And so the last report there is our earnings history. This is from year 2000 on. The thing I want to point out is, the actual numbers, we actually take that from our audit, which in the past, all that showed was, you know, adjustments. You got money in in January, it was really for the last year, so it was just accrual accounting. But starting in about 2012, there was a Gatsby change, and now they require to estimate a fair market value, so each of our agents sends in that to our state auditors, and we don't even see it. So what it does, it just assumes, well, what if you had to sell everything on December 31st? Of course, you're not going to do that, but, so you'll see some swings there, especially 2013. We had some step-up agencies, which they told us when they, when they valued them at year-end, they said, well, that's, that's a short-term thing, that's gonna immediately turn around after the first of the year. So, which you can see this, this negative number in 13, and then the abnormally large number in 14, because this is the very low interest rate environment. So basically, you can take those two numbers and average them, and say that's what we actually got in cash. So we're not really seeing cash numbers, because this valuation is part, it actually affects what they report as interest earnings, and not just our.
Yes.
Part of our modern accounting system, so, so that affects our variation. But I should probably give, next time I'll give a report of our actual cash earnings as a third line, so you can see that also, but that's all I have today.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to cover anything else?
If you'd like, we could do the general fund second quarter. So, budget review, I'd ask you to turn, I think these are a little bit backwards, but it's on the second page, about a third of the way down, it says departments with budgets, and you can see the totals there. And if you look way over to the right side, you see our net levy cost, this is as of the end of June for the general fund, we're at 27% of the levy at 50% of the year. And that's primarily, if you look over two columns, revenues are at 73%, that's because we've received all of our payment in lieu of taxes, BWCA money and the state in lieu, and some other funds. So we're way ahead on revenue. Our expenses are at 53%, so that's just a little ahead of expected budget of 50%. That's primarily because we've paid out, we have all the non-mandated still in the budget for 2018, and they're all paid out at 100% as of June 30th, so that skews the numbers. Most of the departments are in the, as you look down, are in, very close to the 50% over/under. There's a few exceptions, but generally, because we're mostly payroll, we're very close to the 50% number. So, I guess that's it, unless I'll ask for any questions.
Questions, comments? And the timeframe on this is as of August?
This is as of June 30th. We do it by quarter.
On the second quarter.
We were kind of busy with the budget, so we didn't get this in last month. I'd ask for, we asked for approval of the report, just accepting the results, so I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I move to accept the report.
I'll second.
Other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All righty. Okay, well, we have about five minutes until we do the public hearing.
I have a couple of things for Commissioner Concerns.
Okay.
We had our Soil and Water meeting last week, and they have formed a subcommittee that will be working on the strategic plan. They will bring their final draft to our December meeting, and we will hopefully adopt it in January. So that's the update for Soil and Water. And then, years ago as a group, we agreed that none of us commissioners would go rogue and go talking to our legislators on items that pertain to the county, so I just wanted to let you know that in looking at our jail situation, Ben Hallberg has reached out, and maybe you've been contacted by our legislators, it's not out of line for him to talk to our legislators, but just to get you updated, because I'm hoping to discuss this at AMC in the General Committee, it fits under the General Committee. So there's a statute that was created back in the 90s, and it is, when a sheriff or other correctional officer has custody of a person charged with or convicted of a crime and transfers that person more than 100 miles, that sheriff or other correctional officer shall provide transferee with custodial escort of the same sex. This has been an issue for us for years, but when this was created, we didn't have the technology we have now. So what Ben is looking at is, is this still a relevant action when there's cameras? We have cameras in and outside the squad car. So, the question he is asking is, can this be changed? Can there be things done? It would save us a huge amount of money in Cook County, and I'm guessing for our region and other areas that do transports, this would save them money also. So I am just gonna bring this up at the General Committee, and I wanted you all to be aware in case anyone brought it to you, that I was gonna ask a couple of questions about this, if you're all okay with that. And I'm not asking for any changes, I'm not doing, I'm just.
Just clarification?
Just questioning whether or not this is something that can move forward, and I'll keep you updated, and Ben has reached out to find out if body cameras can be considered nowadays. It's a changing world.
What's the purpose of the ruling? What's the purpose of that?
I'm guessing to protect.
To protect the, the person who's being.
The deputy and the person being transferred.
So, and.
And I've done those when I dispatched, I mean, if we had a female transfer, I had to be in the squad with the male officer, even though there's a barrier between the two of you, it's just because of this action that we have to make sure that we do that. So when we're transferring to Duluth or Minneapolis, if we have a female deputy on duty, we have to find a male deputy or dispatcher to be in that transfer. It works both ways.
So the camera is a legitimate.
We don't know.
Protection.
We don't know, but we want to ask the question. We don't know if that would be acceptable in this time, but we're now in a time when we have cameras that we didn't have before. So, it's worth asking the question.
Right.
Can it be changed? What can we do?
And is that at the public safety meeting?
I'm on general, which covers all and every, but it's too late in the year for us to take any action, that would have had to have been done earlier in the year, but I would still like to present the question in that committee of how other counties feel, and if any other counties are in the same situation. I would assume way southern Minnesota is transporting north, and they probably have similar struggles.
I understand the struggles, I just don't get the camera.
A replacement for a person?
Yeah. I don't get the camera providing protection, but, but there may be many other things that, that could be talked about.
The question is whether or not the camera provides safety and assurance that nothing is happening during the transport.
Oh, okay, got it. Okay, that makes sense, yes, okay. Got it.
Otherwise, you're paying a person then to be.
Okay.
To be the eyes and ears of the vehicle.
Okay, it's the eyes and ears, I get it. I get it.
Good, thank you on doing that.
I would add too, that I think there might be some implications with legal issues with that, so that's something that will have to be explored, because I know this has come up in school systems where I work, where we had to have two people.
Yep.
And with the YMCA in Duluth, now we got out of mentoring because.
Yeah, when we go to youth and government, there has to be two people in the, in the, but there's no bars between the people and the kids in those buses.
But I guess also, it would be an issue with MITC or, you know, the legal.
MCIT, yep.
MCIT, yeah, thank you. So there's some legal ramifications with it, I think, as far as liability.
Yeah.
So...
So I'm sure all sorts of things will come up, but I just kind of wanted to ask the question.
Yeah, thanks for doing that.
Right, okay. Okay, well, we're just about at the nine o'clock hour, so I think, Brady, I'll turn it over to you. Public hearing.
Yeah, so you received the notice and the list of parcels by email. And I don't know if you brought them, but here's another copy. And Lisa produced the list of tax-forfeited property. She's here, if you have any questions. And we put the notice out. So this is a notice of public hearing for the purpose of approving for sale and classifying tax-forfeit lands, as described in Minnesota's statute 282.01. Parcels of land becoming the property of the state in trust under law declaring the forfeiture of lands to the state for taxes must be classified by the county board as conservation or non-conservation. And the reason for this is we don't have, some of these may have been classified in the past, but we don't have record of it. And rather than researching each parcel as they come up, this idea is that unless there's a reason, a specific reason, to classify something as conservation, this would classify them all as non-conservation, and so then they're available for sale or transfer or different types of uses as they may come up, without going through this step. So at this meeting, the county board will allow any person or agency possessing pertinent information to make or submit comments and recommendations about the pending classification for parcels listed below. After allowing testimony, the board may classify, reclassify, or delay taking action on any parcel or parcels.
I've also got a handout for you guys, I made it this morning, just to kind of give you a little bit of an idea of the process as we're moving forward, because this is kind of the first. And I also have a copy of the review sheet that's behind it, kind of showing how we have to go, what permissions we have to get as they go through the next processes to make it available for sale.
Sure.
Thank you. Very brief. Would you see a new idea?
I was noticing on some of the parcels, it's barely significant, like 0.5. How much land would that be like?
Well, and some of it, you know, we wouldn't be able to sell outright if it's not considered a buildable parcel, but we can still sell it to a joint more.
Oh, okay, sure. And then there's some bigger ones that could be possibilities. And are these, they're all over the county, I take it?
Yeah.
One end or the other?
Yeah, the only thing I would like to add, too, is that I do not have listed here the parcels that are set for exchange.
Oh.
So once the exchange is finalized, then I would bring the new parcels in to get classified.
My home is on .36 acres, Jenny. So .5 is bigger than what I have.
.02 isn't very much.
No. adjoining.
I know we have, there's one alley within the city of Grand Moray, so...
So you said this is the first step, getting these designated, and then the next step is?
Next step is deciding what we might want to put up for sale and then getting the approvals. Basically, how our county works, if you look at that second page that I have, anything that's outside of municipality, which is basically the city of Grand Moray or any designated townships, since we have a royal, we have state forests, then everything has to go through DNR approval.
So DNR approval, and if it's within a township, are they ever involved?
Yeah, if it's within a municipality, then you have to get their permission, so...
Okay. Is any of that brought before the board again?
Well, once we decide what ones we might want to sell, then we would come to get you guys to approve of sale prices and set sale date.
Okay. Has this been long process? Like, a couple of years?
Sometimes it can be, yeah.
Or tip of the trail, it could be decades.
Yeah. Brady?
True. Waiting through snowbanks and, no, you don't have to do that.
You just have to find the right buyer that'll pay in full in cash.
I've got a question. Are they pretty much scattered throughout the county, or are there concentrations in certain areas?
No, they're pretty much scattered. You might have, I think, the most clump altogether is up around the airport. I think there's 320 acres around the airport. Otherwise, it's a 40 here, you know, a 40 here. It's, yeah, pretty much scattered throughout. The only area we do not have is on reservation. We actually, you might remember, we did do that sale earlier in the year, and that was the only parcel of tax for within reservation. So now there's no parcels within reservation.
So the Pierce-Munson addition is the huge one. 40, 80, and 140.
So Brady, the tax-forfeited land that we have, the one we're of housing on, was used for the housing. Does that translate to anything here, or are we pretty much going to sell it off and not be involved in anything else as long as housing goes?
Yeah, I have to go look and see which parcel that is. I'm not...
Okay. I know, I think the EDA, they did recognition of about 50 parcels within the whole county that could be used for housing.
We did, but they weren't tax-forfeited.
They weren't, yeah.
No. We took a map, and we said, "Where would be a good place for housing based on location, access, ability to get sewer and water?" And some of them were privately owned. So when we just looked at, because as you all know, we have lots of rocks and other things that prevent you from building. So we just took a map and looked at what was buildable, and then we looked at who owned it, and some of it was forest service land. I mean, if we were lucky and found any that was county land, then we could start a negotiation there. But, yeah, we went broad spectrum and down.
Okay, Brady, anything else to add, or Lisa?
Could I just ask one more question? So the assumption would be that before this tax forfeit means that basically the county owns it to start with? Is that right?
Yeah, it is forfeited, it actually forfeits to the state technically, but they...
That's what they say, yeah.
But they allow us to sell it, get it back on the tax rolls, and we get the money, but it's under legislative guidelines as to how money goes when it's sold, so...
Got it.
Unless there's a reason to, at this point, we would, correct me if I'm wrong, Lisa, but we would declare all of these as non-conservation to have the most flexibility in future disposition of these parcels, unless there's a reason that we would identify one or more of these as conservation-related. And if we summarily designate everything on this list as non-conservation, at this point, we still can go back and identify the individual parcels and name them conservation or other use later. So right now, what we're really just trying to do is clear the slate and say, here's a whole list of stuff we're aware of. We're going to, we've put it out there for public comment, we haven't received any, nobody's here to speak on it, we're going to declare them all non-conservation so that we can step through the other aspects of the process related to the disposition or designation of future use of these parcels. So this is just to clear the slate and know that we're starting fresh with all of these pieces.
Okay.
So there isn't really a whole lot of substance here, it's just a preliminary step so that we can start the rest of the process.
Correct. There's several things, I mean, Lisa's got a backlog of, you know, requests, ideas, things that people are, you know, want, or things that we may be proposing, and each time, you'd have to come through and classify it, since we don't know that they're classified. And then there's a waiting period in the public hearing. So this will really speed up any, anything that's ready to go for transfers or sales.
Great. Okay.
I would like to move that we declare these properties as non-conservation.
Support.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Lisa, for doing this, too.
Thank you.
Okay, next item would be administrator update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two items that aren't listed under number seven, they're listed under correspondence that I wanted to draw your attention to. One is item 9D, the letter to the Grand Moray City Council, related to the Joint Powers cost-sharing agreement that we have with them for the cost-sharing related to the expenses of the YMCA. Looking at the JPA that we have with the city, it's no longer reflective of the current relationship that we have since our contract with the YMCA changed. So two things have to happen if we want to change that, is, well, A, we need to change it so it's reflective of the actual agreement that we have with the YMCA, and then B, this is the point in time to have a conversation about the actual amount of money that's included in that cost-sharing agreement. And the first, the article for amending that JPA required that we send them a letter with our intent asking for a renegotiation, and that within 60 days, the first meeting between the two, the city and the county, would occur. So I sent that letter last week. It will be at the city council meeting on Wednesday tomorrow, and there's nothing to do with that except to identify who is going to be on the negotiating team on behalf of the county and get that first meeting scheduled. When I, it's budget time for the city, the same as it's budget time for us, so if we're asking that they would have a changed cost share in 2019, Mike said, "What do you think that that number is?" And I said, "Well, there was a mechanism within some of our agreements, there's actually a mechanism within the current agreement that there would be an index of up to 5% per year." So I said, "Well, let's go back to 2014, let's include the 100,000 and the 10,000 and index that." So here, here's where I think we should start having that conversation. But the actual negotiation happens between those, the groups chosen by the city and the county to do that, so... But he did ask for a number, and I threw that number out, and instead of 110,000, if you index that from 2014 to 2019, that number's 145, and that's a starting point. So anyway, I think the important piece would be to identify who would join me and that negotiating group to work with the city, and the contract, or the JPA does call for us to have that first meeting within 60 days of the sending of that desire to renegotiate. So that would be happening yet this fall.
Okay.
If there's any commissioner interested in...
I'm looking at Jan, because she was part of the original.
Yeah.
She knows I'm looking at her, too.
I do believe it will be resolved within the next, before the end of the year.
Okay.
The intention would be for it to be resolved before the end of the year, and the first meeting is supposed to be within 60 days, but they've got to set a preliminary levy by the end of the month, so it might be moved up even faster than that.
Okay.
And I know we've been involved in conversations with the city related to this agreement. Attorney Hicken has already revised and reviewed the old JPA and corrected and updated language so that it's reflective of our, the current arrangement that we have with the YMCA. So a lot of the work is already done, it's just kind of sitting down and having the conversation about the cost-sharing portion of it and the actual dollars and cents.
Great. Well, I'd be happy to do that. I feel like I've had a lot of experience, having been on the council for those years and around for those negotiations in the beginning, so I'd be fine with that.
I'll make the motion that Jan be on the committee to review the contract between the city and the county with JPA.
Support.
Questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You can go on with yourself.
The second item I would provide an update on is the letter that we received from Sawtooth Mountain Clinic regarding our coroner agreement with the resignation of Dr. Stover and the change of her job responsibilities and the agreement, coroner agreement that we have at Sawtooth Clinic. We've received a notice from them, a six-month notice canceling our agreement for their coroner services. And what I will tell you is that we're meeting with Sawtooth Clinic and Sheriff Eliason and Attorney Hicken next week to start conversations about how do we meet the requirements that we have to the citizens and the community and the state in making sure that we have everything covered. Dr. Stover and Sawtooth Mountain Clinic is happy to work with us in this transition and help us make sure that we don't have any lapses, so, just so that you understand that that has happened and that we're working on it, and we'll be bringing to you a proposal to provide coroner services or meet those same requirements at some point in the next few months. Anything else?
No.
I just wanted to make sure they had that as soon as we did, so...
Yeah, that's good.
That would be all I have under administrator update, unless there are questions. Then I would go to the health insurance renewal, which is item 7B. And I think many of you have already heard that we've got good news related to our renewal rates for this year. We met with the benefits review committee, and we met with representatives from Northeast Service Cooperative and from Blue Cross with the benefits committee, and the recommendation of that committee is that we renew the plan, the existing plan that we have for 2019. It's a year-by-year renewal, so it's a 2019 renewal at a 1% discount from last year's premiums. There are a few changes in the benefits, but all of the deductibles and service levels and co-pays and everything else is staying the same because we're staying with the same plan. Some of the offerings, one of the reasons we're needing to get this done early is the renewal for Blue Cross means that they've got to get information out to their members, and if anybody wants to change some of the other benefits that they have, or if they've got a spouse that's employed elsewhere and they want to withdraw, or, we have to allow time for that. So approving this today gives us plenty of time to make sure that all of our staff and the members have appropriate times for renewal decisions. And the fact that we've got a really good renewal rate this year helps with the issue significantly.
Okay, questions or comments about this? Commissioner Deschamps?
I just want to say, grateful for the decrease. I just, I guess I shouldn't question the volatility of that piece, because it's little of any control that we have over it, so just accept the...
So when do you start looking, then, into other options? We know that this possibly won't continue on, or it might?
Well, Madam Chair, I would remind the board that last year, we actually did go shopping, and we had somebody do that for us, and nobody would touch our group with a 10-foot pole.
Okay, good point.
So our membership in the Northeast Service Cooperative means that every three years, they go out and competitively shop, and their start, this 2019, will be the first year of the three years of their new agreement with Blue Cross. So our membership with Northeast Service Cooperative means that we meet the guidelines for competitive bidding of our healthcare premiums, and I would suggest that we, the process of...
the process of shopping is a year-long process. Nothing has changed in our, in our group usage and our statistics in such a way that I think we're going to find any benefit from shopping otherwise. Our membership with, with Northeast Service Cooperative at this point helps us. Now, next year, two years, three years from now, it might be worth us going out and looking for other options, but, but last year, honestly, the only one that, that even put in a number for our business was PEEP, the Public Employees Insurance Program that the school works with, and, and it would, the cost would have been significantly higher than what we're currently paying for significantly less benefits than we're currently getting. So I think we, in my mind, we've satisfied that for a couple or three years at a time. And because the Service Cooperative does the competitive bidding, we meet the requirements for that. Until such a point in time that, that we're facing a significant fiscal challenge again, I think that's, this is a good option.
It goes by numbers, that's for sure.
So what I, what I would ask is for the board to approve the renewal of the existing plan and authorize me to sign on my contract.
So moved. I'll second that.
Any other questions or comments?
Could I just make one more comment? So in view of what you just said, that the whole idea that we don't have control, obviously shopping is control, and we've heard a lot of comments from the public and last night, including that our administrator hasn't been... The question is, is the, is having administrative government worth it? And clearly, this is an example of, yes, it is worth it, and this kind of expertise, this kind of work is required to be competitive, to get the right price, et cetera. So I just wanted to comment on that. This is one, one prime example of administrative government really working on our behalf. So thank you, Jeff, for doing this.
Thank you. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You then, Madam Chair and Commissioners, the, the next item is the further renewal, which I know throws people off. You probably got notices mid-year this year and went, what is this further thing? And maybe you got your, maybe you got your new, your new card that says further. Further is the name for the select account. So this is the VIBA portion of the health plan that we already have. It just has a different name. Nothing has changed, but we do need to, we do need to approve this contract as well.
So select account has become further.
Select account is now further.
Okay.
And if you haven't received a new card to access your VIBA funds or your HSA that you might elect individually through that, then you soon will. Your select account card works until it, until, until it doesn't work, and then you'll get the other one. And then that work, one works until you run out of money. So anyway, this is, this is just that.
Okay. I do control that.
Any questions on that?
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Further comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And all that.
Then, Madam Chair, in the interest of time, if I would quickly skip to seven E before we get into our budget conversation. It's that time of the year again, and I understand that Friday, September 21st, is the day that the International Day of Peace Initiative is wanting to recognize the International Day of Peace. And for the last three years, this board has authorized a, a motion in, in support of that day, the designation of that day, Friday 21st, as the International Day of Peace. So that they're asking us to do that again, and that's coming up next week.
Then you all have a copy of that. Okay. Just for public purposes, I will read the letter from Kathy Sullivan. Dear members of the Cook County Board of Commissioners, on Friday, September 21st, 2018, is the United Nations Designated International Day of Peace. Each year, the International Day of Peace is observed around the world on the 21st of September. The U.N. General Assembly has declared this as a day devoted to strengthening the ideals of peace, both within and among all nations and peoples. The theme of the International Day of Peace in 2018 is "The Right to Peace: The Universal Declaration of the Human Rights at Seventy." From the United Nations Statement, "The Universal Declaration of Human Rights was drafted by the U.N. Representatives with different legal and cultural backgrounds from all regions of the world and adopted by the United Nations General Assembly on December 10, 1948, as a common standard of achievement for all peoples and all nations." And from the Secretary-General Antonio Guterres, "It is time all nations and all people live up to the words of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, which recognizes the inherent dignity and equal and inalienable rights of all members of the human race. This year marks the 70th anniversary of that landmark document. I believe we can begin in a small way to heighten awarenesses of people where we live to unite communities instead of dividing to build bridges and hope. So I'm asking the Cook County Board of Commissioners to join in the support by making a resolution to make Friday, September 21st, 2018, a day of peace. This will be a rally of peace in the harbor at noon on Saturday, the 22nd. I hope you will join us. Thank you for your consideration, Kathy Sullivan."
I'll make the resolution that Friday, September 21st, 2018, is a day of peace.
Support.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
So did Kathy ask her anyone to attend?
She usually does. I was planning on going.
That's great.
Try to be there. Do we have a time?
I think they're going to do it on Saturday.
Yeah, Saturday at noon.
At noon, yeah.
It was interesting. I went last year. There were very few people there, but, well, Mike Carlson was there, and Sue Weber was there, and there were, there was a couple who were staying in the campground from Canada, and there was another not United States person there, which was interesting, that, that drew out of the campground a number of really interesting people. So it's worthy of...
Myron, you've played in the past, haven't you?
I've done it several times, but I, I know that Kathy had contacted me, and I've got sort of some commitments that Saturday. And last year, I did, too, and, but I usually played the guitar and led the scene, yeah, some good old folk songs.
Last year, yeah.
Last night, I had to stream the stream, and that piece on Earth began with me, and I was going to say...
That's the same day as the airport pancake breakfast.
Yeah.
Twenty-second, that's right.
I got some family commitments.
Later. Yeah, later and earlier.
This is later, really.
Yeah. You can fit it all in.
Whoever can fit it in. And we're back when we'll be there, at both.
Okay.
The airport and the Day of Peace.
Oh, fantastic.
Okay, very good.
Awesome.
Okay, Jeff, then we'll move on to the budget discussion.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, and, and thank you to everybody who attended the budget meeting last night, as I was unable to be there. But maybe we would start with, with a conversation, discussion, a summary of how the town hall meetings went and the format of them, if there's any feedback for us for preparing materials for next year.
Okay. So last night, we had the two districts.
And I would say we, we did get a lot of comments that really appreciated having that meeting. It didn't seem like they appreciated, but I think overall, it was... The main issues, there were a lot of issues that really didn't have anything to do with the budget, but, but truly, there are hot-seat issues for, for the community, and the Y is one of them, and what was the other one that was, really didn't have anything to do with the budget?
The longevity thing, settlement for...
Yeah, although that does have to do with the budget. Yeah, we were criticized for our negotiations. It was insinuated that we just went around giving raises willy-nilly, but consider... But there was something else. But anyway, the, the Y, it got the most conversation, and Myron, you, you were great to answer all those questions from the Y perspective, separate from the county perspective, which I think they really appreciated.
There was a lot of interest about the vacation rentals.
There you go. The vacation rentals, yeah.
Todd gave a good explanation of that also.
Todd gave a lot of wonderful explanations. He, his knowledge and experience in having, you know, actually been born and raised here helped, helped, I think, the whole flavor of the meeting.
Anything else, Myron?
Brady offered a lot of really good answers, too, to those technical questions.
Well, I think there's some misunderstandings that, so these meetings are important, that we try to explain things of how statutes work, laws work, agreements, and, you know, contracts and so forth. So sometimes, you know, it's, it's not the way we'd like it to be. It's, it's the way it is by past agreements and so forth, and so I think we clarified some of those things. Vacation rental was an issue, and I think we talked a little bit about chloride, whether that was to, to do, you know, sort of prevent maintenance costs in the future, but also the dust removal aspect of that, so, but by and large, it was worth the time, and, and I think we were able to explain some things sufficiently. The interesting aspect that I found is that it was sort of just focusing on certain things, and we really never talked about what the levy should be.
That's my point. That's my point. There was very little conversation about the county budget.
I don't mean to glib above, but I found that quite fascinating. There was some concern expressed about last year's and so forth, but we really never got into why we did it or anything like that, but, yeah, we talked about everything but what the levy should be next year. I didn't hear anything on that at all.
And I, I saw people understanding things. I saw their, you know, you could tell that they learned, learned something, whether they liked it or not, but, you know.
Okay. So Commissioner DuKirk, you had Gunflint.
I did. We had a citizen who brought up vacation rentals and a suggestion of another fee. They were unaware of our 4% lodging tax that we already have. They said in Florida, they charge 11%, 12% tax, and I said, yeah, that's roughly what ours is, and they didn't know, so. Very few people there. I think I had the best question, and the question was, what do we lose if we don't set the levy at our suggested maximum? So that was a good question, which Jeff was able to answer.
I missed you.
You know, I think people forget, when it comes to our staff, at the end of 2016, we took $1.15 an hour away from our department heads with no notice at all. We said, we're going to charge you 20% on your health insurance. That's a cut in pay, and they had one pay period's notice. So to say that we give them everything, we don't give them everything. Not to pick on Bev over there, but she owns property. When we raise the levy, that comes out of her pocket. It's a tough decision. You know, sitting there in the negotiations, you, you know, as a commissioner, how this is going to affect your employees. They may get a raise on one side, but they're paying it out on the other side. So those negotiations are not easy. They're not pleasant. They're not tough, and I think some of our staff walks out of there thinking we're assholes. Sorry if you have to bleep that out on... I mean, they don't like us when we negotiate. We don't give them everything they ask. They understand it, maybe some of them, when they go back and look at it, but I know they go back to their unions, and the unions sit there and go, you know, why didn't we get this? How come they didn't do this? This, this isn't huge. Why couldn't they just give us this little piece that we asked for? And so it's give and take. It's not, it's not easy. It's not pleasant. I'd like to have a committee of city members that would like to sit in a few union negotiations. It's pretty dang intense, and I don't think that anything that they ask for is completely and totally unreasonable, and they often come to the table with ways to do it besides asking for it. They've already figured out in their meetings how we can all accomplish it and how easy it'd be for the commissioners to just do it, and so we've come a long way since I got elected. When I got elected, there was one union where 20% of the employees qualified for public benefits. How do you look your staff in the face when they're able to go upstairs into public health and get services? I can't do it. I'm done.
And Commissioner Deschamps? Thank you, Heidi. Commissioner Deschamps, you were in Hovland?
Yep. We had a pretty big crowd there. We had five.
Okay.
But basically, it came down to, John was asking about PILT, and then one of the other concerns was looking at the proposed levy was the, the additional jobs that the different departments are proposing, you know, which if you add them all up, it's over 2% of the levy, which is adding employees, you know, and that's a, that's a concern in my district, is, you know, how many employees is enough?
Mine, too. I think all of those...
Other than that, it wasn't.
Okay. And in the West End, we had about eight, eight or 10, and a discussion there again was around some union questions, and some of the points, though, were good, and, and I took away from that, that as we become more technological, knowledgeable, to put things on the website. And so that was offered as a suggestion, and, and I keep saying, okay, so we can't be everywhere in the county, but we can have things on the website. And Valerie does a great job in doing that right now, and Jeff also, to put things on so folks can be up to date. Our budget was already on before we went to the town hall meeting, so that part was great. Some of them brought the papers with them, and so I think that was the one thing, that's my takeaway, that we keep doing that, having posted things on the web and keep reminding people that it's there for your taking. So I think overall, we're pleased with our town hall meetings and think about it in the future, evaluate it again, and...
So if I could, Madam Chair, the, the two questions that I heard that, one was the, what is the cost if we don't do this? Which I think is a great, just a general policy analysis question. What is the cost of doing or not doing this? And I think that that's an important consideration. The other question was, was really not related to the, the question about PILT in, in Hovland, was, was more about what are the commissioners doing on behalf of the residents of Cook County and wanting, and, and hearing them wanting more information about the work that, that we're all doing, but you, as commissioners specifically, are doing in the legislative process. And so I think that that means that we can bring some of what we're, especially this, what we're going to be doing this week, and what we do in December, and what we do in February, and make sure that that is more broadly available through our website, through Commissioner Reports, through the minutes of the meetings, just, just broadly more, more information about what it is that we're doing. Now, we walk through that process. We, we know we do. We've got a September meeting, and then we'll have an October regional meeting, and then we'll go to the annual meeting in December, and we know that, but we, we take it, I take it for granted, that that's part of the process, and, and I forget that we have to spend time communicating that as we go through and let people know what we're doing, and that it's very important that we spend this time advocating on behalf of the citizens of Cook County. So that, that was a great piece, and I sent an email to Valerie while I was sitting there, knowing full well it wasn't going to send until I got back to Grand Moray, but at least it was, it was in the queue and it was, and it was sent out, because it was a, it was a great comment. So those two things, and regardless of what the number of people are that turn out for these, it's an opportunity to interact directly with the people who want to interact with you as commissioners. So I, I think it's, it gets really tight to get that done in those two weeks. really tight to get that done in those two weeks. But it's the, it's the right time to do that, because we've just got enough information about what our budget looks like. And then we're going to the AMC, you know, Legislative Fall Conference. So there's about two weeks to get that done. It's really tight. It gets busy. But I think it's, it's been well worth it. This is the third year in a row that we've done it. And we'll be getting out, from this point, we'll be keeping the materials on the website up to date. We'll be getting out the truth in taxation notice. We'll be getting out the preliminary tax statements. And then we'll be including that, that budget mailer that we started last year. Valerie is working on updating that. And it'll be, the information will be refreshed. It'll be a little different angle on it. So that's, that's what, that's what that looks like. I think the next thing we should do is maybe if Brady wants to review the levy summary and the impact to taxes, those next three sheets in, in the packet, if he would review that.
Yeah, so the first sheet is the summary that you're used to, your preliminary and final levies. And you can see the breakout there, general, highway, human services, airport, building. YMCA no longer stand alone. That's part of the general fund. That's partly because there's no reason for it to stand out. And two, it doesn't fit accounting wise. Our state auditors would prefer it in the general fund. It's not a special revenue fund. We've changed that contract. We manage the building. It's really a lease relationship. So anyway, that moves up to the general fund. It has its own department. It's easy to report on and see the same results. We've got, we need to show our sales tax revenue for our bonding. So, and this is actually just the revenue account, sorry. But we use that for bonding. But that's, that is a special revenue fund. So we are showing that again. It has no levy impact. There's nothing in the levy column. It's just revenue coming in and then moving off to pay bonds. So. And then our new CIP bonds are there at $85,000. That's not the full payment, but that's because we levied for that this year. So we didn't have to, we don't have to levy the full amount next year. We will for 2020. We'll be levying the full amount, which is over, a little over $200,000. Keep that in mind. Equipment bonds are still there for a couple new years, $337,000. So the net down there is $9,009,012,211. These are the requests. This is the initial request with some adjustments. And we've made a few of those adjustments already from what was initially, the initial was just over 8%. But with these adjustments, we're down to 7.31. Some of those adjustments, the larger ones, Jeff said he could give up half of the staff development that he had budgeted in his department, 65. We've already removed the additional person that was halftime with the YMCA, halftime for Brian. So that's a cut of about $33,000 to each of those programs. Brian's 110 maintenance department and YMCA department. Reviewing the jail staffing with that Judy's hours were overstated, so we reduced Judy Severson to what she's actually working. So that reduced that $17,000, 521. We did add the music association and the playhouse came in with requests for arts. So that's up $6,000 for those requests. And those are the big ones. Essentially, that brought it down from the original $4,499 to the $4,425 where we are now, which is at the 7.31%. So if you look to the next two pages, what's the effect of 7.31%? This is the addition. So we're not talking about tachinite credit, that's anything like that. That's already in your base tax. This is the additional tax that someone would pay. The first page is seasonal properties. And the second page, same information as homestead properties. And just look at homestead for now. So the first column says what's our net tax capacity? What's our preliminary levy? $9,09,012,211. That's what was requested. That's 7.31%. At various market values, what's the increase? If your house is a market value of $76,000, the estimate is about $21 at 7.31%. At a market value of $100,000, the additional tax is estimated at $32. At $150,000 market value, the estimate is $57. At the median value of $247,000, the additional tax is estimated at $104. And so on, down to $500,000 market value there, the estimate is $225 additional tax. The next two columns are just two options. There could be many options. So the two options are 5.99% in column option A, and option B is 4.99%. And you see that also in Jeff's summary, if anybody, on the next page, it's really reflecting the same. So there's a, to get to 5.99 is a cut of $122,000. And then you can see the impact. For example, at $76,000 drops from $21 to $17. And at 4.99%, that tax drops to 14, $21, $17, and 14. At the median market value, it goes from $104 at 7.31%. Under option A, it's $87. Option B, it's 74. So there's the idea of it. And on the next page, you can see the additional requests this year that make up a large part of that 7.31%. These are the staff requests, about $239,413. And the new capital requests, we have a regular capital requests, like IT, et cetera. But these are the new ones this year. There's a little bit in there for YMCA, $25,000. There's $60,000 for the sheriff's department. He's trying to build up for armor radio replacement. And then $100,000 in the building fund for the inevitable projects that we run into each year. So that's $185,000. Total of these additions to our budget, besides payroll, these are the other additions, $424,000 for 13. And then the summary below, so those additions of $424,000, to get to 5.99 would require cutting $122,000 of that, if that's what you chose to do. To get to 4.99 would require $213,000 cut of that 424, if that's how you chose to do it.
So there's a, a couple of questions that I would ask the board to consider in looking at the summary. As Brady pointed out, this, the summary of new requests in 2019 is above the program that we've had from 2017 to 2018. And as hard as the board fought to maintain the program in 2017 and 2018, my assumption is, is that you're going to want to meet your goal for setting the levy within these new requests. And I want to verify that or ask if there's other things, research, questions, numbers, that you'd like Brady and myself and other staff to look at. Or do you think you can reach your preliminary levy goal from this menu of items? This includes the $130,000 that we have set aside for the, for the public health grants. This also includes the $15,000 that we have set aside to this point in the process for the arts and culture grants. Those are the amounts that are set aside. For the formerly discretionary grant process, has been split out into the public health and the arts and culture portion. We, we don't need to decide which of these things are in and which of these things are out. As far as the staff requests, I would have you note that the, the full-time, the VSO and the eligibility specialist were, are in the budget for 2018. We just haven't made the decision. We haven't brought to the board to ask to fill those positions to that level. But it is in the budget for 2018. But those changes in the staffing levels have not been approved by the board. The case aid is a new position. You heard the rationale for that. I would, I would think that the Budget Committee and/or the board would want to hear from the department heads related to each of these requests again before making a determination. And obviously, you have to be asked to review the request before you would make the determination to authorize each one of these. The capital changes, the 536 line goes back a couple of years to the facility study we had done on the YMCA that recommended if you start setting money aside, then you will have money to pay for these maintenance items, mechanical systems, air handlers, when the time comes to replace them. Capital fund balance and 200, as Brady mentioned, was related to planning for armor radios. We always have the option of doing things the way we've done, which is save our projects until we have to bond for a bunch of them again, and then have debt service. Or we can save for them and be able to pay cash for them as we know that they come up. Now, we already have a balance of both, related to our cars, related to our computers, related to our copy machines and printers. We have fund balance that we drew so that we have cash to pay for those things when they happen. A lot of the other equipment that we have, we don't have capital funds to draw from. So this represents staff trying to think forward and make, and help us plan into the future for that. Building projects, in 2018, Brian was budgeted for $52,000. This shows $100,000 worth of additional projects. And, you know, one of the projects could be the front steps on the courthouse, which currently just have caution tape on them, asking people not to step on them because they're failing. So we have capital needs. We know that. But we also know that if our goal, if our promise last year, as we were going through the town halls, was we need to correct the budget, we need to balance the budget, and then going forward, we can have sustainable increases in that 4% to 6% range, which was in the materials from, from last year's town halls, and also why Brady picked the two examples that he picked, then we have to, we do have to say no to several things. And I think it's important that people understand that we do say no to a lot of things. We don't have to say yes or no to anything today. Before the end of the month, we do have to set a preliminary levy, and we do have to set a date for a truth in tax, taxation meeting. And my question to you, the commissioners, is, again, do you, do you think you can set, come to an agreement on a preliminary levy and make the adjustments necessary from this list of options? Or do you want us to look for additional items?
Okay, so we'll open that up for discussion. Commissioner Deschamps?
I think from what we told the people last year, and what do we see in the, the new staff wise there, I think we can meet 6% with, pretty easy.
Anything additional that you see that we're missing? Okay. Commissioner DuKirk?
I'm a little shocked that he said 6%. I'm kind of leaning towards going lower than that myself. No, try not going to 3. I struggle with this because we set our levy at 17 to cover the 18 year, which was not the 19.9 we needed. So I assumed coming in, we would be on the very high range. But having 17% in 2018 was a huge ask and a huge burden on a lot of people. And I feel like 6 is a continued burden, even though I know we need to do it. I can't do it. I just, I can't do the continued burden. So the promise of 4 to 6, in my thinking, even though I know we haven't put more into the fund balance, is to set our number for September at 5.5, and try to get down from 5.5 if we can, and use that 6 when we really need to, when we have an unexpected or something come in. But I'm really, really nervous about saying 5.5 because we get lots of unexpected that happen. But I'm really just looking at these general numbers and things that we can put off again and continue to tell the same people no over and over again, even though that's not fair. I think that we can easily hit 5.5.
Commissioner Bertrand?
Well, being on the Budget Committee and, and went to all the town hall meetings just so I could experience personally what people are saying. I tend to think strategically, at least from my own experience, that we have been sending a message that we were going to get some fiscal planning involved. And we should always think long term. So from my perspective, I think we corrected some things that needed to be done. We added some staff that needed to be done. And now we have a commitment, I think, to the public that we're going to stick to our word from 4 to 6. And so I would be thinking that we would be at about 5.99, mainly because of the options that are here. And I've gone through and looked through, and I've talked with, you know, Commissioner Starley, our board chair, and I talked briefly yesterday morning, a little bit about this, as well as what are some scenarios. And not to make any decisions or anything, but to see what is workable, and still provide services that are needed. So I always look at budgeting as balancing services needed, to be cost effective, to maybe save some, make some decisions that could save money later, and be preventative versus, you know, just approving things, or not approving things. And so that's, I'm a centrist. I always tend to think going toward a middleist. That's just the way I've been. And so I'm leaning at 5.99. The work has been done in, in looking at some figures, and I think it's workable. We'd have some work to do in figuring out what to cut. We'd have to cut $122,000, and I think that's workable, from my perspective at least. So that's where I'm leaning.
Thank you. Ms. Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the Budget Committee, this is really felt wholeheartedly by the Budget Committee, I'm assuming, at this point. And, but I also, so I want to honor the work that the Budget Committee did. And I also want to honor what the citizens have asked us to do and what we promised last year. And so that 4% to 6% is really important, that we stay in that range. And in my opinion, when I look at these numbers, I don't see that there's a huge difference per taxpayer in these numbers. But we already asked for a bigger number last year. And we did that. We balanced the budget and we created a sustainable model. And, and I worry about 2020 coming in with the full bond payment, which we're going to ask people to, or you all are going to ask people to do. So I don't see much difference between 5.5 and 5.99, and I still think we have work to do. It's interesting how I have changed personally since I started in 2015, and really feeling strongly to advocate for the arts and really wanting to fund the arts, et cetera. And I know that, and I know these people personally, but I also know that there are other ways for them to get this $15,000, other than taxpayers. And a lot of creative ways for them to get at that $15,000. So, but I also believe that they benefit the county in big ways. So I'm not like saying, let's cut them, but I think there's room to cut. And, and seriously, the kind of money that comes into Cook County that is not the taxpayers can can, is, is a better way to leverage for that money, I think, or that, and to create more professionalism amongst those organizations is not a bad expectation. And so, the positions in the top, you know, without nitpicking too much, I know that, that they're justifiable. So I, and so the question comes to my mind when I'm thinking of the future, and where we want to be, and how we want to invest in our community. What would it be like if we don't invest in these positions? Will we just get there a little slower, which maybe is not a bad concept, to get there a little slower? So, I'm, I'm advocating certainly to stick within that four to six percent. And 5.5, 5.99 doesn't make a lot of difference to me. But I know that it's more money, so, to cut. But, and hopefully, we can get even below that. So, I mean, I love, I would love to deliver four. But I think that's, when I think of investment in the long-range community, I don't think that that's necessarily a responsible decision to make. So, I guess I didn't say anything.
Well, I appreciate everybody's thoughts. I've certainly learned a lot after being on the Budget Committee for two years, and especially this year, when we've had the additions of the five people to help us look through things and, and scribble down percentages and numbers, and as I have done over the last few days, looking at everything. And I do think that we're all in the same boat as far as strategic planning. I'm impressed with our Department Heads, Highway Department, she's looking out, you know, like 10 years out. That's what we have to do, and the 2020 does concern me in terms of our payment then, but this is setting a levy for 19. So I think with some restrictions.
2019.
2019.
19%.
Yeah, well, no. Why is that in my mind? You perceive that. No, I think, you know, with everything that we have before us, we're going to make some more decisions about some positions. They'll come before us, before the Budget Committee, and maybe before the Board, too. So, I guess my percentages and calculations come out at 5.99. And so we've all given our share of opinions on that.
Madam Chair, if I, if I could, the Budget Committee will continue to meet until we set the final levy. And the Budget Committee has not seen this summary, except that it was released with the agenda materials on Thursday. The first time that this summary was discussed was Thursday night at the Town Hall meeting in Hovland. And, and it was, it was, it was a way to break it down and have a conversation about that. And I, and my goal was to, to hope that this was the way that, that the Commissioners wanted to balance that as well. When you look at 1% levy increase, it's $92,000. $92,000, and, $92,360. A 5% increase this year would be $461,000. A 6% is $554,000. When you think of what things cost, a new camera system at the, at the Law Enforcement Center was $120,000 that we had to take out of fund balance because we didn't have that available. When we look at 2020, and we know we have 2.5% wage increase for our staff, that's approximately $200,000. When we budget 10% on health, health insurance, we don't know what that's going to be, but that's another $200,000 budgeting for that. And about $125,000 of additional debt service, that's $515,000 of new revenue needed in 2020, without changing anything else. And if we go 5% this year and 5% next year, 5% next year would be $484,000. So we would have to make cuts to the current program to accommodate 5 and 5. And my point is just simply to show that because of the size of our levy, a 5% change is a very nominal change. And the one point of context is going back to the State Auditor's report and looking at the summary budget data across the state this year. 2018 counties showed an average increase of 4.5% in, in levy, because the cost of living has gone up, and it, and our share of that is the only thing we control. The cost of other agencies, state and federal agencies' participation is not keeping pace with that. So we have to be just a little bit more than CPI, or we have to make strategic cuts as we go forward. 2 and 3% does not carry the, just the base cost. It doesn't cover just the cost of doing business, when our commitment to our revenue sources is less than 50% levy, our levy is less than 50% of our entire expenditure budget. So that, that's why all of these considerations are important. The other pieces are that before we make a final levy decision this year, we'll have an updated financial management plan that shows the 2017 numbers, the 2018 to date, the impact of the levy, of the bonding that we had this past year. We'll be considering, moving forward with the jail study, and we're not showing that in here. That may have to be part of the, of the capital considerations that we're showing. We may have to take towards that, that continuing study, that would be an option. And then, and then my greatest concern is, is in the, in the positions that we're showing, we're adding three contracts, three health insurance contracts with those proposals. If we say yes to all of them, that's three additional health insurance contracts, and, and two part-timers who wouldn't qualify for health insurance. Those add to the unknowns, and those add to the context of the decision. And, and I, and I just wanted to say those things, because as we've had the Town Hall meetings, the decisions we make today impact the decisions available to us in December, and they impact the decisions available to us next year and the, and the subsequent years. The other important point, and I've shared it with you before, but now I'm kind of sharing it for the, for the public, is even though the counties as a whole had a levy increase of 4.5% this last year, they're also budgeting to spend $160 million worth of fund balance to keep the levy that low. That 160% of fund balance is the equivalent of buying down 5% of a levy increase. So if the counties all said, "We're not going to budget to use fund balance, we're going to use the other source available to us levy," then the average levy increase this year would be 9.5% across the state. Last year, they used, they budgeted to use $170 million worth of fund balance.
Interesting.
Either counties are going to have to, to blend that and come to the reality that 2 and 3 and 0% doesn't support the budget.
Yeah.
Or they're going to come to it the same way we did, which is just kind of hitting a cliff and having to go like this.
Right.
Either going to, people are going to have to make the adjustment that that strategically reduce programs and services and the staff available to provide those programs and services, or say, if it's 4.5%, but if we want to plan for any growth, then it has to be 5 or 5.25%. And just understand what that is. And for us, a percent is $92,000, which means for us, a half a percent is $46,000, which isn't a lot of wiggle room. The only, the only reason where we're in really good shape is, A, we don't have a lot of debt. B, we do have a strong fund balance. And we have a strong enough fund balance that we don't have to be adding a line in there that says, "We're going to add this to fund balance just to keep pace." Our expenditure budget is not changing significantly. Our Department Heads have worked really well to manage that overall. So I don't anticipate us needing to add to fund balance over the next couple of years. But eventually, the expenditure budget, if it grows at 2.5%, 3%, will catch up with our reserves, and then we'll start having to add to those reserves again going forward, as long as those reserves are, those reserve levels are important. So, the most important piece is that the budget process and the Budget Committee, I think, has been a very good process. The public input is very good. And this, September is not the end of that. Setting a preliminary levy is not the end of that. And that's why I don't, I'm glad we're not having a conversation about which of these things are in or out, because I think it's only fair to have those conversations. This Board has been good about that. If we're going to have a conversation about a position that we have, the Department Head making that request here, to offer context and answer questions about the need for that position, and we have time to do that before we make final decisions for 2019.
Madam Chair, just to get this moving, I guess, I would like to make a motion that we set preliminary levy at 5.99%, which mounts to $9,790,000 to 11.11. The understanding that we'll look at other possibilities of maybe reducing that further before a final levy.
Okay, we have a motion for 5.99.
I'll second that for discussion.
Okay. Discussion, comments, questions? Okay. There being no more questions or comments?
We did, but just in case, you know, you give your two cents and Peter O'Mearan threw out his motion.
Can I just make a comment? Just before we take this vote, I just feel like we have come a long way in creating this budget and creating the process of budgeting with adding this committee and the Town Hall meetings. We've created a, and Valerie's position and communication, we've added an enormous layer in educating, or the potential for educating the public, we've added an enormous layer in transparency, we have added enormous expertise in creating these numbers. And I just want to, to be even, you know, thinking between 5.5 and 5.9 is, wow, it's, it's come a long, a long way. It feels really, really good to be part of this Board, and as, to be part of this thoughtful Board. I just want to say thank you for this great work, to invest in this fabulous community.
Commissioner Doogood?
I know, sometimes the public thinks it's all about staff, but over the last years we've gone through not having enough to pay for cameras without pulling out of the piggy bank, we've had transmissions and motors go out at the Highway Department, we have no control over fuel prices whatsoever. And so, I don't know any time in history where the county has said, "Oh, we met our fuel prices in August, so we're not plowing the rest of the year." I mean, there's, there are huge things that you just don't see that are part of this. So it's a little sad that the top of our discussion is staffing, because it's, it's the staff that delivers it, it's the staff that's the face that we all see. But I kind of get tired that they get blamed for everything, besides us. Because we're not always the face in the courthouse, so I know some of our courthouse staff take some punches for us. So thank you to the staff that takes the hits for us. And $46,000 is a transmission, so I guess I'll join the team from now on.
Okay, so we have a motion, and a second, to set the levy at 5.99, and for the public to understand that we can't go up, but we can certainly look at things to evaluate coming down. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign, passed. So we will then move on to sentee, setting the date for truth and taxation.
I would like to move, maybe for discussion first, in looking at a date, I just talked to some other people, and as November 29th, it's a Thursday. And if there's any negative reaction to that, then it'd be nice to know, otherwise I'm going to make a motion to do that.
That's right. That's a week after Thanksgiving. That'll give the public time to get back. We were hearing a comment about earlier, it would be too soon.
So Tuesday of that week is too soon, whereas Thursday.
Thursday, 29th. Brady, do you see any challenges with that date? The, the Tuesday after Thanksgiving has been our traditional date. The comments that they heard last night were that it was too soon after the holiday.
Last year, there was an issue with them getting the Friday paper and knowing when it was, and their notices that came that gave them the preliminary. We had a lot of comments last year that they didn't feel they had enough time.
So this week, they, or this time, they would have a week before.
Six o'clock. Six o'clock, yeah.
Is there a reason we're shooting for a Thursday instead of the next Tuesday?
Because they felt the Tuesday was too short.
I mean, the next Tuesday.
Oh, oh, this is December.
The following Tuesday.
Well, the next, the next, the next Tuesday is AMC.
Oh, that's right. Okay. Then there's no conversation. That's right. I totally forgot. Yeah.
You'll be, you'll be traveling to AMC that day.
Okay, never mind.
If I may make a motion to set the truth and taxation at 6 o'clock, Thursday, November 29th, here in the courthouse.
Okay. Any further comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The date?
Who seconded the motion?
O'Mearan.
Nobody. He made the motion.
Who made, who seconded it?
Oh.
Brady seconded it.
Yeah, yeah. We all seconded it.
She didn't enunciate very well.
So I've spoken at that time.
Right in my head.
Okay, so we have a lot accomplished here. Anything else, Jeff?
No, I don't see any issues with the date.
Okay.
Ready?
Madam Chair, I would just think that everybody will be much happier going to AMC and raising your hand and talking about our preliminary levy this year.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, last year, it was good luck.
Yeah, really. Like showed them, didn't we? Let me realize.
I would, I would share that.
Several conversations at AMC, there are other counties that are in the same position.
I would share that the county administrator news that comes out of AMC yesterday talked about, other counties have already set their preliminary levy, and there are a couple of counties who are looking at the same thing we've been looking at for the last three years. They're, they're at that point where they didn't make the adjustment. There are people with millions of dollars of shortfalls this coming year, there are people that are looking at double digits and 20% increases, and it, it, it happened to us first.
And that's the conversation when we talk about what the public doesn't see us doing. I mean, Jeff, you've had numerous conversations, and we've all been questioned when we're at the association, because they all see, you know, other Commissioners see it coming, and they kept asking, you know, "So you didn't avoid it, what could you have done to avoid it?" And there's nothing we could have done to avoid it, except for eliminate staffing. But I mean, they all wanted to know, "What'd you miss?" We didn't miss anything.
No, no. We became a much more sustainable, more professional organization. That's what we did.
One more comment, the sooner you do it, the better you are in the future. And so, it's our cumulative effect.
Yep, the next Budget Committee meeting will be next Tuesday.
Yeah, I think we're at $92,000 a point. I know St. Louis County is $1 million a point, so.
So there's no really, yeah.
But $1.25 million a point. I think the levy is $120 million.
Yeah.
I think part of it is that people, people think next year's going to be better. And sometimes they bet on that.
Right. Well, it's always easy.
And using fund balance, or really expecting that, betting on it, rather than planning for the moderate, for the worse.
Utilities are going to go down. That stuff goes down every year.
Like it does every year.
Yeah.
But you're right, that's, that's the beauty of humans, though. Optimistic. But it's also the downfall of humans. Not realistic.
Is that a Commissioner concern, if I could?
Yes.
Thank you. I, I would just like to announce to all of you and the public that I spent two very moving and powerful days, Friday and Saturday, in training for restorative justice. And we had an excellent facilitator and coach by the name of Ted Lewis. And there were 16 of us from the community that had all kinds of experiences that bring some uniqueness to the table, so to speak, or to the group. And we went through simulate, you know, a lot of knowledge-based and simulations, and I was so impressed with the intention and attitude of these people, that they care about their community. And we all came away from that at the end saying, "Wow." One person, I won't mention the name, who worked in the county for a long, long time and is retired, said, "You know, I think this is one of the things that's come along that we can make a difference."
we can make a difference. And so, you know, I think, I want to thank our county attorney, who's been looking at this, you know, and knowing that it's not something we can do right now with our budget. So, went to the community, and there was a group of people in the community that said, wow, this is something that would be good for our young people, especially in others, and maybe deal with some healing, rather than just punishing, and hopefully changing some people being restorative. So, she said, boy, this is going to work. And so, we have the synergy of the community, and now, I think, the county, from our staff. And we have some people there that are involved in funding in nonprofit organizations. So, all that synergy is just bringing something forward that I think is really going to be a neat experience. And we have people, more people that want to be trained, so we'll look at that in the future. So, it's just a very powerful, it's the best sitting I've ever done.
Oh.
Eight hours a day.
Wow.
It was quite rewarding. So, thanks to all those 16, and then to Inger and the others that have worked hard on this.
Great news. Any other concerns? I will just bring up a little report. I serve as ex-officio on the Getchigami Trail, and the DNR has been up here to talk to folks about the development of a trail from Grand Marais down to Cutface, or down to the wayside there. And the meeting that I attended up here was well-attended, lots of comments to the DNR, and the comments were in regards to their building a bridge across Fall River there. And so, due to the fact that there was some, there was a comment in the paper about the DNR should look in particular about how they build that bridge, then the Getchigami Trail Association formed a letter, and that was printed in the paper this past week. So, I just want to bring it up, that we are aware of their comments, and I think the DNR will move in an appropriate way to make that area a facility for all people to enjoy. And they still are considering the comments. And just to bring you up to date, I have no news, other than what they're doing right now, just looking at it. But, it's a beautiful area, and it will be accessible then to everyone with the bridge and the view platform that they're going to build there. So, we're going to be at AMC this week, so we will be meeting with fellow Commissioners and learning all about what's going on in the state, and talk about some topics that we'll be bringing up to our December meeting, when we go further into meeting again with folks. Anything else to bring up? Anything else? No? Before we adjourn, or we will, we will adjourn, we will talk about anniversaries.
All right. We have some big ones. You know, it'd be interesting to bring in the staff that's had over 20 years and have lived through multiple changes of Commissioners, and ask them how it does or doesn't affect their lives. So, we have Lindy with us for 25 years. Thank you very, very much. Rowan Watkins, six years in our information office. We have Melissa, five years at law enforcement. Pat Eliasen, Don't Kill Me, 23 years. Thank you very much. And Valerie, she did put this out before us on Facebook to let everyone know. Yesterday was the day that she celebrated her second anniversary with us. Andrea DeBoer, five years in Public Health and Human Services. Lori, what a year, in one year. She came on to help us out, and stepped up, and took Yafa's position when Yafa had to leave, so thank you very much, Lori. Michael Smith, 25 years at the Recycle Center. And Kelly Schlepp, four years at the Highway Department. So, a lot of people on this list you don't always see, but know that they have been here with us for a very, very long time, and they are doing great work, so thank you.
For sure. Okay, no other business, so I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Madam Chair, I'll just, what I'm handing out is the major changes. So, if you're keeping your book, and if somebody says, what's in the YMCA budget right now? You have the corrected budget page.
Yeah, thanks.
You know, there's a couple of minor, you know, $800 things that aren't in there, but.
Okay. Hey, thank you.
You don't want to print the whole report again, because we'll be changing it.
All righty.
You're going to opioid tomorrow.
You're going to opioid.
I'm going, I'm going to opioid tomorrow. The country.
Let's say take.
I'm going to spend.
Is that like Xanadu?
I'm going to spend eight hours talking about opioids.